Welcome to the August 19th. It's actually a workshop for about a housing TIF for a project on the South Gate location. And we'll go ahead and actually dive right into it. So introduce yourselves and a little bit about it.
Sure. My name is Kyle Ambler. I'm a real estate development officer for Avesta Housing.
And I'm Jim Demises and I'm a consultant helping out with Avesta from the Homoein Associates and a Scarborough resident.
Thanks for joining us.
Even better. Just being honest.
One thing before we get started, we do have half an hour allotted for this. We could either have you stop and ask questions as they go forward with their presentation or allow them to move through and then we can sort of step back. What would your preference be?
I hate waiting. I hate waiting to ask because then sometimes it's gone. Whatever you guys think. Do you know what I mean? Like we wait sometimes to the end, sometimes things are gone.
You forget by the time you get to the end.
Yeah, if we have a question that could best be answered at the end or our future slide, we'll let you.
True, perfect.
All right, why don't you jump in?
We'll jump right in.
So I'm going to do a quick overview of the proposed development. This is the site as it currently exists. As you all know, it's the old South Gate house located at 577 US Route 1. It's currently seven units in the old house and five of the units are currently occupied. And as part of the redevelopment plan, we will be completely rehabilitating the front unit and adding another 42 units off of the rear.
Wow.
And this is the proposed new construction on the left. There's the front, the view from the road and then the view from the, basically a cutaway view of the side of the property showing the drop down back toward Phillips Road. And as you can see, as you can see, the design intent is to mimic an old farmhouse. So you see the restored house up on the front. We still haven't worked out what we're doing with the proportions yet, but it's sort of been a National Parks Service accord, but we're working on it. This is the location of the project site right out of the dense corner. This is the proposed site plan for the development.
Just for reference, Route 1 is to the right of that frame and the white is the kind of the existing structures.
Right, so the existing front house, one of the barns that will be preserved and then the barn in front will be converted to community space. And then the yellow in print is the new 42-unit construction building. So again, 50 units of affordable housing. The target area median income for this development will be between 40 and 60% of AMI, which right now the income level is between $17,000 and $45,000. It's currently located in the Town and Village Centers French District Zone, TBC 3. And we're currently in the contract zone application process with the town as you're all aware. We're having a meeting later tonight. And we are seeking tax increment financing through the town and through Main Housing to assist in viability of the project. So this is our current timeline. We have the, we're still working through the TIF and the municipal approval process. The intent is to submit to Main Housing for the loan and housing tax credit round in the first week of October. And if all goes well, construction will start approximately next August with a completion date a year behind that.
So I'm going to just go over some of the gut of the TIF essentially and some of this is just like applies to TIFs in general in terms of how they work. And I'll just walk through that and then that'll lead into some specific numbers around this particular project. So the core of a TIF is understanding what's called the tax shifts that basically when you have property valuation increases, it impacts the amount that municipalities receive in state aid for education, municipal revenue sharing, and the amount that you pay in the county tax. So that these are, they're based on the premise, whether you buy into it or not, but they're based on the premise that the more valuation you have, the wealthier your town is, the less you should get in state aid and the more you should pay in county taxes. That's the basic premise. So, and again, this applies outside of a TIF. It's just simply how the valuation works within those kinds of formulas. The biggest being the state aid for education, which is the biggest amount of money, smaller and decreasing all the time is the revenue sharing component. And then the county tax is based purely on your share of the valuation of the county. So that's the premise for understanding why TIFs work. And let me just explain some of that. When you, without the use of the, without the use of the TIF, when you run the numbers for the town, you currently lose around 58% of every dollar increase in revenue from increases in valuation. So if you raise a, if you have new, if you have new valuation, you raise a dollar in taxes, you lose 58% of that approximately and you keep 42% of that. And it's based because of, you actually keep the money, but it's because of those shifts that occur with the added valuation, the impacts again on the state's funded formula, the revenue sharing formula, and the county tax system. So these are standard formulas that are used for each of the towns. They're based on the towns, on the state formulas for education and so forth. And the number varies by town in terms of the exact amount that each town loses or gains in terms of revenue impacts. But by doing a TIF, increases in valuation are sheltered. So in other words, they're kept away from those formulas. So the formulas act like they don't, that that TIF, that that new valuation doesn't occur. It's occurring at the town level. There's still property taxes going on, but in terms of the state valuation for those formulas, it's not being considered. And so you can shelter that for up to 30 years, any amount between, I believe, two and 30 years in terms of a TIF. You avoid, by doing so, you avoid those losses due to the county formula and the state fiscal formulas. However, and this is a key piece, is you can only use those TIF revenues for approved TIF purposes, which have to be determined at the time that you approve the TIF locally. You have to, you both determine that locally and in your application to the state, you have to specify what those uses are. And we'll get a little bit into some of those, what you intend to use the TIF revenues for for this project. But that's a critical thing. The money does not accrue to the general fund. It accrues to what's called the development fund. And the development fund can be shared between the town and the developer. Yep?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Based upon what you just said, I'm assuming that the tax revenues from this property are lost to the town completely?
What do you mean by lost?
Well, we don't, we can't use them. Right now, we can use them.
Yep.
Well, you can use 42 cents on the dollar of them if we would not TIP it. This proposal, half of those revenues would come back to the town, but they are directed in a very specific way. They're not.
Let me ask you a very, very simple question. If we approve this, are we going to lose tax dollars or are we going to have less tax dollars coming into our pocket to spend the way we want or more?
So I can answer that by a slide, which if you give me a minute, we'll get to, but don't lose that thought because I want to show you the actual numbers. Because it's a very good question and has to do with whether it's general fund money or not. And so just quickly, there's, there's different kinds of TIFs, two basic kinds. One that allows you to do commercial properties and the town has several of those, which are, they're administered by the Department of Economic and Community Development and they're for any kind of commercial or industrial development, but not housing development. After the, after the program was on the books for several years or for quite a few years actually, the state then through the main state housing authority or Main Housing developed an affordable housing TIF. Affordable housing TIFs allow the money to be used for project operating costs and they, they, besides being passed by the town, it is, has to be reviewed and approved by Main Housing and not the Department of Economic and Community Development. It's used to help, its purpose is to provide more affordable rents to local families. And the connection with Main Housing is that it allows, by having a TIF, it gains the developer points with Main State Housing so that these projects can be ranked. And if you have a certain amount of points, it moves you up in terms of the likelihood that you'll be approved by Main Housing. Not every project gets approved. And I have a slide later on that that talks about sort of why a TIF for this project is needed, which further explains that. And here it is here. So projects are competitively scored by Main Housing and a TIF is needed to be competitive. Planning board approval is worth four points in the Main Housing application. A TIF is worth three. A community revitalization plan is worth another two points. With a TIF and planning board approval, this project scores 56 points. Last year, as a point of comparison, winners needed 54 points and only three family projects were funded. So, so it's a very competitive process and you're right on that sort of, sort of projected, if you will, cutoff line of how this project can be competitive.
What Jim didn't say, Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, without tax credits, this project is not viable. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
So aside from the sheltering and all the other advantages that were discussed, perhaps in this context, the most important piece is that the TIF gives them three valuable points without which the project can move forward.
I can piggyback on that one thought too. So one of the things that has always intrigued me about this project is it's actually a twofer. So we're tagging an affordable housing project and these points are kind of key in order, and the TIF is key in order to make the affordable housing section and piece of it come to fruition. The other flip side of this is a historic preservation project. And just kind of given the nature of the building and its condition and those sorts of things, it's unlikely, and I'll go on that limb, you might not follow me, but I will go on that limb. It's not likely that the building would stay intact. It's not the highest and best use of Route 1 commercial real estate property. And again, the condition of the building, it is certainly on historic preservation's high priority list and it made our approved list and it made the approved top 10 as being vitally significant to Scarborough. It's certainly a character and face building for our community. So it's rather in danger without something moving forward.
I mean, I'll say, I drive by it two or three times a day and every time I look at it, I twitch a little bit because I'm one, I mean, in all honesty, I worry about the structure. I worry about structure fires in that area, worry about how it looks and how it's going to fit in and all the other things that go along when you see a building that's been there for such a long period of time. And from the outside, it looks like it's kind of starting to crumble a little bit. So it's concerning.
So let me go now to the actual numbers. So then this gets to the question before about how the money can be used and how it's different with a TIF versus not a TIF. And then if you have further questions, you will add to answer them on that. So these are mostly estimates, but they're, you know, based on data that's provided by the town, the town manager has seen. The parcel, next year, the parcel is projected to be assessed at 442,100. That's as is if it's just left alone. Forty, 442,100, which based on the tax rate yields around $6,800 annually in tax revenues. That money goes to the general fund. So the, and then, but understand that has, because it's not within a TIF, only 58% of that is kept essentially. I'm sorry, only 42% of that is kept. So if you go ahead with the TIF, you, it's estimated to be assessed at $2.6 million. So it's quite a substantial increase in valuation yielding approximately $40,000 in annual revenues. But again, I want to be clear, that's without a TIF. It currently, so 58% of the new revenue is lost if you don't TIP it to state and county due to fiscal impacts. So this new $40,000 would yield Scarborough about $16,800 in new taxes if it were possible to develop without a TIF. And that's, I underline that because that's critical. In other words, right now, you're getting $6,800. You have the building in the current condition with your current concerns and you're losing some of that money anyway through, through those formula shifts because it's not, it's not within a TIF. If you do a TIF, if the project, if the project were to go ahead, it would generate $40,000 without a TIF, but then about, that would yield $16,800, again, assuming it were possible to develop without a TIF. But again, it likely won't score competitively at Main Housing without, now let me carry this over to the next slide and talk a little bit more about what it therefore means with a TIF. And then we'll go back to the key questions. With a TIF in place, $17,300 in new revenue each goes into the development operating budget and into the town's project account in the first year of full buildup. So in other words, with a TIF, you're able to increase your likelihood that the project goes forward because it gets approval and higher ranking by Main Housing and makes it possible for the developer. $17,300 each goes to the town's development fund and the developer's development fund. And thus, the town will be ahead of where otherwise would be even without a TIF. Because going back, remember, you're either getting $16,800 if it were possible to develop without a TIF. But again, it probably wouldn't go ahead and you're only getting $6,800 maximum right now. So with a TIF, you're better off. With the caveat though, being that the revenues cannot be used for the general fund. They must be used for the purposes specified at the town, at the, at the time of the TIF agreement is developed and approved and that has to be submitted to Main State Housing, to Main Housing. And in this case, the town is electing, if you pass it, to have its share of TIF funds going to the local affordable housing initiative fund. So that's the trade-off and that gets to that key question. Yes?
You're, I'm skeptical of doing this without a TIF generating $16,800 is, it's not really a viable, because it's not going to happen in all likelihood. So the real comparison would be to the $6,800 because that's probably what it'll just continue to be. But my question is, this 42, 58% thing associated with how tax dollars that get generated then gets divided up, would the 42% be applied to the $6,800?
Um, yes, it would in a sense. I got to be a little careful here. In other words, it's usually applied to, like it's more thought of about new rep, so like that's existing as is, that building is generating that amount in taxes. So if you, you could say that overall with all valuation in the town, that, that kind of trade-off in what you lose in education funding and the other formulas, yes, it does apply, but in the case of TIFs, it's always thought about in terms of the new valuation. So it's the same concept, but it's with TIF, it's always incremental valuation, new valuation going forward.
Can I ask you a quick question?
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to slice you, cut you. Who determines, so you're, so you're telling us that this TIF money that we get has to be put aside into a general fund purposes. Who decides, do we get to decide beforehand what those general fund purposes are going to be before?
Just to clarify, they're not general fund.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, phrased it wrong.
But Tom, can you answer that question?
Yeah, forgive me. There's a decision point here and I, and I had involvement to set it up as it's presented here tonight. Very simply, the proposal is for 50% of the new revenue to go to the developer and for 50% to come to us. Based on precedent of the Griffin Road TIF last year and also the ongoing efforts of the Affordable Housing Alliance, I'm suggesting, my recommendation is that we dedicate our 50% toward the established Affordable Housing Initiative Fund, which has a definition of what things it could be used for. And that's a qualified purpose that's already been approved by Main Housing.
Okay, so I guess that was what I wanted to make sure was that, that, that money wasn't going to be delegated by someone in Augusta. Was nothing to do with Scarborough.
No. The decision point, if we wish, we don't have to dedicate our 50%. It could be a 50% TIF that would satisfy the needs of the developer and we could receive the other as general fund revenue and use it however we wish. I think it's important to help advance the ongoing initiatives of affordable housing.
So we do lose, we do lose $6,800 in tax.
Question.
In general fund revenue. You're still going to take the money in, but you're going to lose it with those formulas.
This, this may help if this is the answer that I'm thinking. So just pretend, you know, 50%, we've got $2 million valuation, but 50% is TIF. So therefore, that million dollar valuation is no longer counted against us for school funding and county and whatever. So therefore, it's an increase in your, increase in money so that you can receive from the state. You understand how that works?
And that's because the value, the value of that property does not go into the total population.
Right. So there's some, there's a bit of win-win there too.
You mean the term, wait, wait, for the term of the TIF.
For the term of the TIF, when it expires, and this is proposed to be 17 years in duration, then the full value falls to the tax rules that were affected as we.
Yeah, and I apologize, I actually should have put that in this presentation. It's proposed to be a 17-year TIF. So after 17 years, it goes just like.
Then it becomes regular valuation, right?
So the taxes are 34.6?
In first year.
17.3 times two?
If it's a 50/50, yeah.
Yep.
So even though it's 17 years out, what you're proposing to do is, is to create a property that's going to really bring up the value of the taxes that we have on that property now. I mean, I know it's 17 years down the road, but.
And it's going to help fund, you know, a priority or at least this council, which is affordable housing, having a nest of monies outside of the budget process.
We have people that can't afford to live in this town.
Why isn't it 40,000? Why is it 34?
Oh, no, it's really, yeah. It has to do, and the tables are actually in the application that I think you received in your packet. It's because it's the increment. In other words, I had to back out what you're already, the 442,000 is already on the books in your valuation. So that's the difference. Yeah. It's saying it's, it's 2.6 million in valuation.
New money.
Yeah, so it's, and that's hence the word tax increment financing. It's only on the incremental value. You can't shelter the existing value.
Yeah.
The 442 stays on the books as is. You can't do anything with that.
So that, the tax money on the 442 goes to the general fund?
Yes. Yeah, and I, that's, I'm glad you brought that question. I try to oversimplify these things, but that 442,100 in valuation, that stays on the books as non-captured, not within a TIF. So you're still going to get the general fund revenues on that. That actually, that gets better to your question.
Absolutely.
What I try to tell, just to back up for a second, big picture, what I try to tell towns on these is, if you're going to do things that have an overriding public purpose that you agree to is important to the town and the development would not otherwise occur, then it makes sense to TIP as much as you can. If those conditions are met, because it's just good financial policy to do so. Now that's, those are big ifs. They apply in this case, I believe, but that's, you know, that's up for each case, each town to decide.
There are other qualified uses of those funds that we could consider going forward. We have to amend our development program, which can be done. But in the early going, I know the Housing Alliance is very anxious to start to get some financial resources so we can either find additional future partners or other projects, not unlike the Habitat project, maybe to buy land and that would be the subsidy to make an affordable project go forward.
And that's what that fund could be used for?
Yes. The council created it, there's five or six different uses that you allow it for, things such as purchase of land and provide that to you so you have it. The other point I'll just make is the Main State Housing requires it to be at least a 15-year TIF duration for it to receive the three points. The reason that they're proposing 17 is that they want 15 of full value. If you remember the, the project timeline that Kyle laid out earlier, it's not until.
August of 2017.
August 2017 that the project's at full value and actually that one picked up the following April. So there's a couple of years of slow going and we want to assure them 15 years of full value, so it's a 17-year term.
Can I ask just one other question? Has anybody done any kind of an analysis of this project and the impact it might have on the school system?
Counselor Hayes poked around on some of those questions today. What I do know, Kyle, you probably know this off the top of your head, but of the 42 new units proposed, how many are single?
So 37. Right, so 37 of the, of the new units of the 50 total. 37 will be one bedroom, eight will be efficiencies, five will be two bedrooms.
So the point is, we can't say with certainty, but the likelihood for efficiencies in one bedrooms to have children is slim. In fact, you have a requirement that limit the number of occupants depending on the number of bedrooms.
Well, there's got to be history from other projects.
There is. So I did actually look at 15 properties in our portfolio and I couldn't do a, I couldn't get the data in the timeframe to determine ages. So I went and looked at the number of members of a household per bedroom type. So, yeah, actually, the other sheet. So 91% of our one-bedroom units have one person living there and 39% of our two-bedroom units have one person. 41% of our two-bedroom units have two people in them. And all of our efficiency units have one person living there. It's a requirement of Avesta.
I'll be really frank, that, and I just said this, I mean, it's disappointing to Disappointing to me that we still don't have more available housing for small families. Unfortunately, this is a society and we're not, Scarborough is not above it, that has families that are broken apart. And, you know, we're talking about some single moms and some single dads that need to find places for their families to live. And it's frustrating to me that we're still, Scarborough's still not there yet. And I was hopeful that maybe this project would offer a little bit more, but understand the reasoning behind it and I, and I get it. I just hope that as we move forward as a council, we can start maybe looking into some of that stuff a little bit. Have you?
Yeah, and I agree that, with all due respect, Counselor Blais, you know, it doesn't matter to me personally how many kids might be living there who's, who are going to be going to school. Children need to live somewhere and children need to live in safe, clean, and affordable housing. And as Counselor St. Clair has said, this town has an absolute dearth of housing for people, so-called working-class housing that we need desperately and that includes rentals. And I think that this is a great project and I fully intend to support it.
Tom, can you tell us about the costs that developers have to pay for school funding, fees?
Impact fees.
Impact fees?
Yeah, I can't quote off the top of my head, but there's certainly are impact fees for school. It depends on the type of unit, the number of bedrooms, I believe. Beyond that, the suggestion is, or when Counselor Hayes asked this question today, he said, what costs 12,508 kids in our district? I think that's a, you know, the number of kids against the total cost of schools. I think that's a very simple way of looking at it. We've got a lot of intrinsic costs already built in the school. We add one or two or five, that's not brand new, that's not brand new money every time.
Yeah. Some of that state funded.
True, but we're not adding, that's not actual. True, but we're not adding, that's not actual twelve-five every time a kid comes through the doors of the school system.
Right. Yeah, just a couple of key things on that. With your point well-taken about the need for families and that as a policy, this particular project, based on those numbers of comparables that Kyle did, put very few kids in the school system. In fact, if anything, it was very, very conservative, those numbers. It was assuming, I think we even looked at, what if you assume that two people in a house meant one kid? That's conservative, because usually it probably wouldn't. But even then, I think the maximum number was like six kids in the school system, and that was under really conservative scenarios. Just as a little bit of institutional memory that predates most of you, the town actually did do a lot of studies with this about fifteen years ago, when the Valentine Development was being proposed, and those kind of like Teal Point and so forth. And a full disclosure, I worked with this town and the school on how many kids get generated in those kind of units, and they're very few.
Right.
Now, that doesn't get to your, that doesn't get to your point about therefore you need family housing, but it does get to the point about these kinds of developments don't put a lot of kids in-
Although rent, rentals, I would think would be a little different than condos.
So it doesn't really answer the issue.
So let me, let me interject.
That's the end of the presentation anyway, so go ahead.
Did we have any other TIF questions? Because I was just trying to get a sense of, housing TIFs and business TIFs are a little different functionality-wise, and they have to be used in certain ways, and-
This is on the agenda, these general will be here, so-
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've got-
Regarding how rents are set, is that, is that conditional based upon the TIF itself as well?
So Main State Housing determines the rents for the project based on the area mean calculation that they do.
Is that for the life of the TIF?
It's for the life of the project.
Yeah.
Okay, then that answers the question.
They're not market-rate rentals.
Well, I mean, it's, what was it, this past year, you know, the city of Portland was ranked pretty low because of its increasing of rental, rental properties as far as the increase in rent. And so there's gonna be this, you know, kind of concern that once you get the project approved, that maybe the rents start going up.
Those rent-
But it's gonna be controlled by the city housing, so it makes sense.
Controlled for a function of getting tax credits, right? Really not the, not the TIF.
Well, thank you. Are the, are the income levels for an individual or for a couple?
It, it depends on housing size, on, on the household size.
Right.
So it's determined one way if it's a one-person household or single, single-person-
So for a one-person household, what's the income range, or income max?
So right now-
We'll send, we'll send you the actual tables. We'll do a scenario of forty or sixty percent, because these are published as statistics that are known. We can certainly do it.
We'll do a five-minute research while we swap around.
Great, thank you.
And whether it's, Tom, whether it's the TIF or the-